One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please.
Mr. Alt. Mr. Beistel. Mr. Calero.
Here.
Mrs. Love. Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Polakowski.
Here.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Here.
Mrs. Shipley.
Here.
Mr. Benz.
Here.
Paige Weaver. David Simon.
Here.
Let the record show that Mrs. Love called and said that she had to stay home for family reasons. Citizens comments?
We have no comment cards this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you. I also want to pass on thank you to Mr. Shipley for handling the meeting last week and doing a great job. I watched it on TV to get caught up. Thank you. Minutes? It's recommended that the Board approve the minutes of the January 2nd and January 9th meetings. Motion? Motion by Mr. Beistel, second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight. Voting on the minutes, Ken, just to get you caught up, voting on the minutes.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's fine. Yes.
So...
Yes.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight with one absent. Business and Finance, fund accounts?
It's recommended that the Board approve the December 2013 Revenue Report, Expenditure Report, Bills Payable, Accounts Payable, and December 13 Treasury Report. Additionally, Mrs. Tarzan has put the January Financial Reports at your desk, so the individual making the motion may choose to add the January Reports if he or she so chooses to make that motion. If not, it can only be the December. I know you haven't had an opportunity to review those in detail.
Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Alt.
Yes.
Mr. Beistel.
Yes.
Mr. Calero.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley.
Yes.
Mr. Benz.
Yes, the motion passes eight with one absent. Presentation?
This time, I'd like to introduce some Mr. Chris Shelby. Chris is with Piper Jaffray, and here also has Mike Smith with him. So at our last meeting, we discussed bond underwriters at some length, trying to make a determination if we want to competitively bid or how we want to handle this. And the consensus of the Board was that we wanted to hear from our current underwriter in terms of what Piper Jaffray is able to do on our behalf. So, Mr. Shelby?
Thank you very much. I do have a handout, so...
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. One more, Chris. There you go.
I'll try to be brief. Again, my name's Chris Shelby and with Piper Jaffray, and I know we've met in the past, and successfully, I'm glad to say. The debt of the school district, I think of the last time we approached doing a bond issue, a very successful refunding bond issue. At that time, there was a plan going forward, and we tried to maintain communication with your administration through the course of waiting for this plan to evolve. And the plan was, after we took advantage of your bank qualification, the $10 million limit that you have each year to issue tax-exempt debt at a rather suppressed rate due to your issuing under $10 million a year. You're permitted to issue over $10 million. It doesn't matter. But if you issue under $10 million, you get a certain advantage with regard to the interest rate because there's a tax advantage to the investors of that debt. That, now you are, we have left, and we took advantage of that last year. We used all $10 million very carefully and waited for this year, this calendar year, to begin a whole new opportunity for you to look and examine your debt. What you have in the way of remaining debt that qualifies for refunding is very short-term, which is good from a certain perspective. That means it's low-interest-rate debt, but it's debt that we weren't able to do last year because it would have exceeded that $10 million tax-exempt cap you have for the advantageous interest rates. So it was designed to be put off till this year so we can reexamine it and take a look at the market again. With that, there are two issues that have debt outstanding. One is, if I could turn you to the cover page of the, or first page of the handout, Financing Options, you have some choices to make here. One is to do two separate bond issues in order to take advantage of your bank qualification. It gets a little complicated, but the reason you would do two separate issues, even though you could do them both right now, and I'm going to kind of jump ahead with the spoiler, is that right now, doing them combined actually works even a little better than doing two separate issues. But I think it's important that you understand why we aren't going after the bank-qualified debt this year because it doesn't have the impact that it did for you last year. If you do two issues, we would do firstly refunding of the Series A of 2008. And that was a refunding of a prior bond issue in '98. And we would refund that, what's remaining outstanding on that bond, about $6 million. I'm really rounding numbers up. And also, then 15 days later, using prevailing tax laws, since you have to separate bond issues in order to have one give credit to itself since it's a current refunding, I know this is where it gets complicated. But when you do a current refunding, that means that you're calling bonds in within 90 days of their stated call date. If you do that, the U.S. Treasury allows you to give yourself a credit for the bonds that you call in, meaning that if you call in $6,100,000 in bonds and you call them within 90 days of their stated call date, which in this case, we would be doing, you're allowed to use that $6.1 million as a credit back against that $10 million cap. So if you did it, and let's say it was $6.1 million and $80,000 cost of issuance, then you have $6,190,000. The only thing that would cost against that $10 million cap would be the $80,000 cost of issuance over and above the actual par amount of bonds that are being called in. So now that cap goes from $9, $10 million to $9,920,000. So then, you wait. That way, we get credit for that $6 million. Then we wait 15 days under accepted tax law. And now, you have received credit. It's what we call deemed designated, the $6.1 million. You now get it back into the cap because you called those bonds within 90 days. If you called them in a longer period, you wouldn't get that if it were an advance refunding, if it took you longer to call them in than 90 days. So then, we do an advance refunding of the series of 2005, the remaining bonds in the series of 2005. And that's a little over $6 million. So if we do them together, we obviously have a $12 million bond issue exceeding the $10 million bank-qualified cap, and that puts you into a non-bank-qualified status. The only reason I went through this is I think it's really important that you all know, you know, what you did last year. There was a great deal of logic to it because you were refunding your long-term bonds. We refunded the most opportune bonds you had, the highest interest rate bonds you had to refund. Now, what you have left are shorter-term bonds. And the value of bank-qualified is not the same. As a matter of fact, when you have shorter bonds in the same market, investors are willing to pay virtually the same rate as those who have bank-qualified status for the same bonds. So we're kind of, it's not a bad situation for you. It's actually a good situation. With this, if we could turn to page two, I'll just show you the results, and I won't belabor all the numbers, which I did include behind these things, but I'm not going to drag you through them. These are the results, and I have the schedules that support them behind this. If you look at the refund at the top two issues, so we would be doing two issues rather than one, which also means that you're paying costs of issuance twice. And of course, you know, we have to take that into consideration. If you're having to pay legal and printing and rating and everything twice, that's a cost. And that cost can be equal to the value of having bank-qualified debt. With it, if we were to do the 2008A today or do it in today's market, and we don't know what the market will be 30 days from now, which it would take probably to get to the market to prepare for it. The savings, the gross savings are about, on the left there, $214,000. And that 3.46% is the savings percent. That percent is calculated as a percent of the bonds being refunded. It's a standard calculation. The minimum's always 2%. If you're under 2%, you almost don't even talk about it. If you're over 2%, you do talk about it. If you're over 3%, you're certainly very much in a positive situation. But the state will share in that because they do subsidize that issue. And after they get their share, to the right, you'll have your net of $182,000 or 2.95% savings. I just, the little note under that is the identical repayment period for this issue. We aren't extending debt. We aren't increasing annual debt service. We aren't doing anything outside of the exact dates in which that debt currently exists. And the savings would be realized under this scenario at about $45,000 a year between the years 2014 and 2017. So with that issue being done, under federal law, in order to get that $6.1 million credit or whatever it is for the amount of bonds that are being refunded there, we'd have to wait 15 days. It's just typically a bond council call, but that's typically their call. And with it, we would then issue the second bond issue. And there's the number, $6,155 in the red letters. That would be a credit toward, back to the $10 million, meaning that you virtually have all of your $10 million cap again to go issue the second bond issue, which is the remaining bonds outstanding of the 2005 bonds, which was all new money. And they're callable on 4/115, so we do an advance refunding of that, which is fine. The savings on the left, gross savings right now in today's market is approximately $320,000. And when I give you savings here, they're net of all estimated cost of issuance. There's nothing more to, that would be coming from those numbers. And that's 4.86%. That's a very high percentage number of savings. But again, after state aid or after the state gets their share of that number, which they receive based on their subsidy rate, you'd have $267,000. So the two issues combined take you, you know, a little bit under $500,000 if you take the $182 from the '08 issue A and the $267. And your savings, you can see on the second issue is about $33,000 a year in that note. The only thing I'd want to add here is that if you didn't want to take it all as debt service reduction, if you need any money for capital purposes right now, this is a great time to take it. You don't have to take all of it. You can take any amount of that $500,000. And if you need $100,000 or $200,000, it'd be a great time to set it aside as cash savings from the bond issue and leave the $300 remaining thousand as a debt service reduction. So it's a choice you have, and it's not a decision that certainly has to be made today or tonight, but it would have to be made before the bond issue actually goes into the market. That was just to show you what we went through last year and the logic that would have made some sense, except for the fact that because all that's remaining now are very short-term bonds, we're finding that interest rates are very, very similar for both non-bank-qualified and bank-qualified debt. And with that, if I could turn you to page 13, and all I'm doing is skipping over the schedules that truly demonstrate just what I showed you in terms of savings and so forth. Page 13, right now, appears to be the better option. It could be a moving target. It's not a decision, again, that would have to be made tonight, but it's where things stand today in the market. And the second option is to do a single issue, non-bank-qualified, meaning you don't get quite that interest rate advantage that you get on the bank-qualified issue and refund both issues together, but by doing that, doing a combined issue, which will come out to be about $12.3 million bond issue, you avoid paying cost of issuance twice and for having two separate series of bonds or two separate issues, if you will. And you're going to find out, if you look at the savings, that because you're paying cost of issuance twice on the prior issues, and we just estimated those costs at approximately $52,000 per bond issue. And that includes, totally an estimate, we don't, you know, it would come in where it comes in, but that would include your bond council, your rating, all your legal, the printing, paying agent fees, escrow paying agent fees, et cetera. Everything's been estimated in. So with that, we come out to these savings numbers for the Series A of 2008 of 244 gross and 214 net. I'm on page 14 now. And the series of 2005, a 335 gross and 287 net. And if you add those two together, you can see you come out about $501,000. And again, all the new issuance would be over the identical period of time to the date and to the amount as the prior. The only difference between the new debt and the old debt would be the new debt service would be reduced by these savings. Again, I note that if you do have a capital need now, it'd be a great time to extract it because you wouldn't have to go borrow it under any circumstances separately and then just leave the remainder, whatever it may be, as a level debt service reduction to your existing debt service. So that's pretty much an update. Here's where things are. I mean, I know, I guess everyone's hearing this crazy market that's been going around. The greatest concern, I guess, you've heard about quantitative easing and all that. It is a reality. Interest rates are going up slowly. They spiked up a little bit. We go by kind of the 10-year Treasury as a benchmark-type yield to always say, or is it good or bad for us as an issuer like yourselves? It had gone as high as 3%. Of course, it was as low as 2.1% last year, but it's gone as high as 3% this year already. And now, it's back down to about 2. It went down to about 2.55%. And over the last two weeks, it is now beginning to edge back up, and it's approximately 2.75% yield. As that yield goes up, your savings, in all likelihood, because of the tying of the markets together, probably slightly decreases. It is a real concern, obviously, for issuers like yourself and nationwide about getting into the refunding market now. It seems to be some aberration that we've had of getting interest rates back down from that 3% level. At the 3% level, these deals almost did not work. So where they are now, they do. These are current numbers that we've run. And what we would suggest is, we have so much of the preparation done from the last issue that we did last year in terms of the preliminary official statement and working with the rating agencies, that, you know, I know we can expedite that process working with your administration, get you, you'll have to be rated again by Standard and Poor's, and you've done so well in the past. I don't see any issue with regard to credit, your creditworthiness again, and when you do a refunding that saves money, all you're doing is strengthening your bottom line anyways. And that would be probably, from this night, we would hope maybe about a 21-day process. So we still, you know, can't get into this market because we've got to go through the document process and so on and so forth. And I will say for anyone to know, the document process is not at your expense. I mean, it's at ours. We said last year, we're going to monitor your situation, and we have. And I don't think we'd all be here tonight had we not kept an eye on things. And here's where we are, with savings in hand at a time at which you can actually achieve it. We certainly would recommend the beginning, the preparation of the documents as quickly as possible because that's at no expense to you. When the documents are prepared, and that's primarily the preliminary official statement, again, mostly the onus is on your administration, working with them and us and the rating, then we will make another decision at that time, probably something Dr. Monarch may just check out with everybody, and that would be, okay, here's where we are. Our documents are prepared. We now want to submit to the rating agency. But if we submit to the rating agency, you will incur the cost of that rating. They don't care whether you do the deal or not. They will charge you. So that usually takes one week for them. And with that, there'll be a phone call and everything with the administration going through everything we've gone through in the past. And once that's completed, we wouldn't make that call or we wouldn't even suggest you go to the rating agency process unless at that time, the savings are still there and at a level that is satisfactory to you to say, yeah, if the savings are there, yeah, let's get that rating and get in the market and get it done. And that's, that would happen. So to that point, I anticipate, we have no cost to you to go through the preparation. And again, so much of the documents are already in hand as a result of the last issuance that we can expedite that process. I can't speak for bond council, but I would suggest that, as in the past, they would go through that process as well without any cost to you if, at that point in time, two, three weeks from now, when everything's ready to go, you know, maybe the market's gone. It just doesn't work anymore. And, you know, that, so be it. The bond issue won't be done. You don't have any cost or exposure. I think the whole point tonight is to try to get to that point as quickly as you can so that you can be proactive in terms of turning the switch as to whether or not you want to do the refunding or not. And that's when you'll get another look at that time of where savings are. Go expedite the rating process with Moody's, Investor Service, and/or Standard and Poor's, and get you into the market, subject to your approval. You won't be going to market unless the number that can be achieved is a number that you want to be achieved, a minimum number. And I even think, I can't recollect, but we may have done that last year as well with a parameters resolution where we set a minimum level of savings. And I know we well exceeded it. It worked out well as we had hoped, and I know you had hoped. And you set that parameters resolution, but your costs will be fixed. There aren't going to be surprises. It's going to be, you know, probably very similar to the last process as well. And I know the costs have been held very tight, but the whole thing is getting there. And I hope tonight, we're all here because, you know, the initiative's been taken to keep an eye on things and say, hey, here's a great opportunity that you have right now. But I'm here for any questions, and I apologize if I've talked too long. Everyone tells me I talk too much.
Questions from any Board members? Mr. Calero.
Yes. If I'm hearing you correctly, you're basically saying that Piper Jaffray, because of the document preparation in the past, you're going to be able to expedite the process and that that is a good thing for us. It will save us money because you've had this relationship with us in the past. I'm new on the Board. I like competitive bidding, not necessarily, and not in the sense of competitive bidding as you would talk in bond market. Competitive bidding from the standpoint of knowing what different underwriters would provide. Why would Piper Jaffray be the better deal for us? What does Piper Jaffray bring to the table that would make us want to go with you as an underwriter again, aside from past experience?
I appreciate the question. The first thing I again have to answer is I don't think we'd all be here tonight if it were not for Piper Jaffray, for our taking the initiative at no expense to the school district to monitor your debt and pay attention to your debt so that you all know that's happening. And post this bond issue, you can rest assured that that will continue to go on through our monitoring process. So if there's something to distinguish us from the competition, it is, I would say first and foremost is the fact that we are here paying attention to what's going on in Southmoreland School District. And then, secondly, I think the rest of the process, I think we've proven ourselves as part of the process of being good and efficient, and we are a large company. We, your bonds are going to be distributed all over the United States. It's not as if you are not getting a competitive situation here. When these go out, when your bonds are being shown into the market, they are being shown on a competitive basis. They are being shown from everywhere, from, you know, Los Angeles to New York and throughout the market. We're a fairly significant-sized company with offices in every major market, syndicate and sales offices, marketing offices in every part of the country. So, and given the old global way the markets are anymore, I can say on a national basis, we're a very national firm and get distribution. And that distribution creates competitiveness for rating. Believe me, when we put these bonds out there and we price them, we don't price them to give them away. If anything, they're going to be chewing at us to try to get the rate they want. But that's our job to negotiate that. But to, I guess, complete the answer to your question, aside from I hope there's, you can appreciate the time we're putting in and have put in, I'd also like to say that I think it's very important now to expedite the process and get this school district in a position, a proactive position, to enter the market and be prepared to sell bonds. It doesn't mean you're going to, and it doesn't mean you have to. Those decisions haven't been made yet, but at least you have created the opportunity as a Board to turn the switch and say, go. And instead of waiting from that point in time, 30 to 45 days for preparation, you'll be prepared and you'll have that bond issue in the market within seven days, and you'll have your results.
Are the prices between underwriters pretty much the same then? Are you saying that the cost to us as far as issuing the bond, basically between underwriters, there's not much difference? It's going to, it's basically the same? The only difference is what you're bringing to the table is your experience with us and your national...
Right. I am saying that, and that's very easily said. Our, I think the last time we were here, we were asked to put together kind of a comparison of other bond issues, even done in this immediate area, in Westmoreland County as well as Allegheny or anywhere in southwestern PA. It's a very common market, let alone the whole Pennsylvania market. We came in and remain at that bond discount at the same rate, and we were the best rate by any school district for bond discount in this area. And we are not changing that. You know, I'd rather have a long-term relationship that I can come here and talk like this and have this opportunity and be able to be a little, I guess, more special from the perspective of working on things and having taken that opportunity to work on things than just come in and wing it and throw silly numbers at you and then get you caught up with somebody that really, you're going to find people that would be more than happy to come out here and say some number just to have somebody say, okay, great, and you just don't know what you're getting into. And the specialty of our company is public finance from coast to coast. And that's our specialty. I even recommend looking us up and reading all about us. We're a very strong firm, national firm from that perspective. Our group, we used to have a group in Pittsburgh, but Piper Jaffray came in and acquired our entire team because we fit right in their footprint of middle-market issuers and with the specialty in education finance. But it's tough. I mean, it's real tough to tell you why we're so good and everyone else is so bad because everyone else isn't so bad. But I do know that we have you in a position that won't be any better. And I think that, you know, we will give you the best results and the fastest results.
And I'd be disappointed if you didn't say otherwise.
Thanks.
Any more questions from anyone?
With option two, since that generates 51,000, it looks like about $51,000 of additional savings, if my math is correct, are there any drawbacks to doing it?
No, there really aren't unless, there's really no drawback. If that is the option that works, and believe me, I wanted to leave it here this evening, that if it turns out, three weeks from now, that you're better off going with two bond issues, even with the double fixed cost, but the net savings as a result is greater than the single bond issue, we'll say it doesn't matter to us. We can, we've done them in the past. We can do them either way. It just so happens this has fallen this way tonight. But with regard to your question, if we go with non-bank-qualified debt, then we will have used your $10 million limit this year for bank-qualified debt. And I would say the only real effect of that, based on what we see in your portfolio of debt, would be as if you had to do a borrowing, if you needed a couple million dollars of new money later this year, and I'm sure you probably can contemplate right now whether or not that's the case or not. If that's not the case, then I wouldn't be concerned about having used the $10 million limit because you are in all likelihood not contemplating any further borrowings. So if there is a drawback, that would be it, only if you suddenly had to go to market for some new borrowing because you will have, but keeping in mind, it's only that you'll still have your tax-exempt advantage. It's only the spread between the two, non-bank-qualified and bank-qualified. And to give you an exact example typically of what that difference is, on a 30-year bond, it might be the difference between 4.4% and 4.5%. So on the longer-term bonds, yeah, that accumulates because it's, that long-term bond's out there for 25 years. But on the short-term bonds, it just doesn't because the duration isn't long enough and the value isn't great enough. And therefore, that's what we found out. And therefore, that's what we found out, right now, that advantage only offsets the cost of issuance. And, uh, it, and right now, it appears a single issue is better, better to do.
Anyone else?
Yeah, just a, a question. About two years ago, we did this survey of the, uh, of the various, uh, underwriting firms, and your, uh, fees and rates, in a comprehensive way. I, I thought you'd say that, but it was, would you, are you going on the record of saying, and here you were, you were, uh, poured, poured the lower end, uh, in regards to the, uh, to the groups in our neighboring, uh, to the underwriting firms in our neighboring school district, that you would again come in this year, uh, that if we'd done this chart this summer, that, uh, when Mrs. Overeem?
Yeah, we're, we're coming at the same.
At the lower end again.
We're coming at the identical levels last time, no increase whatsoever. Uh, and that was the competitive winner, I know, last time.
Just for all the information, that chart is also in your packet.
Can I just say this? In the, in the 90s, I sat around here in Mr. Tom Penny. He used to come, he was with your firm, he joined your firm, and he worked with us. Uh, so we do have long experience with this, uh, with this firm. And I do think that if, uh, if we do decide to go with them, both in terms of maximizing our, the yield, which if I counted correctly, could be, uh, 449,000, uh, for the, for the duration, or, or half a million, 500,000.
As of today, yeah.
My numbers are correctly, that, uh, would mean a, a ver- that's, that's a, that's a, that's a, it's an important part of our, very important part of our budget. Uh, so the, both in terms of the returns that we've had in the past, and I go someone experienced, and I, uh, and just, maybe one other, that I, I, this gets further technical here, but, uh, but our, uh, former, uh, business manager, Bill Porter, has had nothing but high recommendations in working with this firm. And frankly, I take that as, with some, uh, importance and credibility, where that statement stood.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a question or comment? So, do we have a motion to vote on this this evening, or do we have a motion to, well, I guess we wouldn't need a motion, just to wait till next month?
Do you want to wait for the one council to come in?
Oh, yes.
I'd like to.
One, one second, Levi.
Sure.
I just been, uh, made aware that, um, the one council was coming later in the meeting, so why don't we just wait till then to?
Sure.
Make our decision of what we're doing.
I'd like to make a motion to that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Polakowski?
Safe travels.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mrs. Rhodes?
You too.
Yes.
Old business, I see none.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alp?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
New business, policy 246.
Yes, motion passes eight with one absent. Adopt policies 333, 433, 806, and 818.
It's recommended that the board post-policy 246 student wellness for 30 days.
It's recommended that the board adopt revisions to the following policies.
But recall, this is the policy that Mrs. Huggins discussed with you last, uh, week.
Policy 333, professional development for administrative employees.
Motion? Motion by Mrs. Shipley.
Policy 433, professional development for professional employees.
Second by Mr. Polakowski.
Policy 806, child and student abuse.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions on the motion?
Policy 818, contracted services.
Roll call.
Which, did you have a question?
And you'll recall that each of these policies was amended to reflect current statute with
I'm sorry.
Did you have a question?
respect to, um, training and recognition and reporting of child abuse.
No, I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Second by Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Questions on the motion?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Alp?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski? Mr. Benz?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes eight with one absent.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Um, PMEA Region Choir Festival.
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alp?
It's recommended that the board approve retroactively an overnight trip for Michael Garlovich
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Calero?
to attend the PMEA Region Choir Festival from February 12th to February 14th in Beaver
Yes.
Mr. Benz?
Yes, motion passes eight with one absent. Football field bids. Um, before I read this in the form of a motion, I think we need to do a, a lot of discussing. Falls, Pennsylvania. Motion? Um, Mr. Schaller is with us, our architect who, uh, helped to design our project.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Calero, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Question on the motion? Mr. DeFurio is also with us, our insurance broker who has been working on our behalf Roll call.
Mr. Calero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
in terms of, uh, getting, uh, our insurance. I tried to kind of put this together and maybe frame the discussion a little bit, uh, for you, and, um, I, I think the board has four options tonight. Um, the first option would be to reject all the bids that, that came in, do nothing, and continue to operate as we did. Uh, you know, play our, all of our games as away games. I, I don't think that that's a viable option, but, but that's certainly an option that, that the board has in front of them. Uh, another option that the board has is to reject all bids and rebid the project to replace the turf with sod, if we wanted to, you know, if you felt that it was important to go back to a grass field. Um, your third option is to reject all bids and rebid the job, um, as a turf replacement in kind. In other words, with the type of installation that is currently in there, and the, um, the, carpet that is, is currently basically in there would be, uh, today's, uh, replacement for that carpet. And then the fourth option, um, would be to, um, accept, uh, and award a contract to the lowest responsible bidder that offers the turf that you select. Um, from my perspective, uh, as a steward of public property and funds, um, I can't recommend options one, two, or three. Um, and I understand that option four costs some money, unless we can convince, and Mr. DeFurio, convince the insurance company to, uh, cover some of the additional costs. Um, the existing field, had it not flooded, uh, the life expectancy there is about 10 to 11 years. It was installed in 2006, it's now 2014. So, in 2016 or '17, the district was going to have to expend $500,000 to $600,000 to replace that turf. Um, if we choose option four, um, we will have a field that is less likely to flood because of some of the designs that Mr. Schaller has done, and, uh, will probably last even till approximately 2025, uh, by spending 100 to 125,000 instead of the 500 to 600,000. Um, and from what we just heard from Mr. Shelby, um, we can cover, um, much if not all of that expenditure, um, through, through a bond reissuance, um, because this is certainly a, the capital expenditure. So, I, I just wanted to frame that discussion a little bit, tell you my thoughts. Uh, now I'm just going to sit back and then let everybody else kind of talk and have their say, and, uh, what, what we decide, uh, will be our decision. What you decide will be our decision, I should say. Mr. Go ahead, Moore.
Okay, all right. Uh, yes, uh, as Jack had, uh, stated, we have received bids, as you all know, uh, and on Tuesday evening, we sat with the turf manufacturers, and we spent some time getting to know their systems, getting to hear their, uh, the pros and cons, uh, we, and we were able to compare. Um, we created a list of criteria, based on the specifications that they all bid, that all of the turf manufacturers bid from the, the bidding documents. And I'm going to pass that out, it's, uh, it's, uh, it's two pages, the second page is actually just an overrun of the first. But what it does is it shows you, highlighted in the gray, it shows you the four systems, uh, that we will talk about and that I would feel comfortable recommending, and, uh, it sort of gives you some of the specifications, I'll touch on some of those once you have those in front of you.
Davis, will you assist Mr. Scheller in handing out some paperwork there? Thank you.
The second thing that, uh, will come around will just be the bid tabs, and then also the highlighted numbers, uh, with the bids that are being considered.
That might be the easiest.
So, just to, as we're passing those out, um, we looked at, um, some of the criteria that we evaluated on Tuesday night, and, uh, all of the turf manufacturers make a, a variety of fibers. And the fibers are the pieces that look like grass. So, there's two different kinds, there's a monofilament, which is a more rigid, single strand of fiber, and there's a slip film fiber. Slip film fiber is where they take one strand and they actually slice it to make it look a little bit more fuzzy and furry. So, there are systems that are, that incorporate one, one type of those fibers, and there're systems that incorporate two types of those fibers. The trend these days with, um, the fields is to use a blended system that uses a monofiber and the slip film fiber. And that's, the benefit of that is twofold. One is that the fibers stand up better. When they stand up better, they allow for the crumb or the rubber material to fit in between the strands much better, increasing the safety factor of the turf. So, when that crumb can stay in place, and it's not being matted down by the fibers, it actually has more resistance. And what we, in the industry, they call it the Gmax rating, and that's the safety rating that all fields have to comply with, and each of these systems, uh, certainly do that. The second thing that the blended fiber does is it actually, it's more wearable, it's more durable, and, um, it's going to allow for long, longer use of that field, uh, so you can see, you know, where a typical field of maybe a single type of a strand may start to expire at eight years, um, you know, with ongoing maintenance. These slip films are, and the, the combination fibers, the blended fibers, can see 10 years, uh, because the durability, those two fibers are protecting one another. And, um, I guess the third thing about the blended fiber, which is, is quite a benefit, is the playability. It's a, it's a dual-purpose kind of a field. It, it works very, very well for football, and it works very, very well for soccer. The more vertical strands as they're standing up are, is going to allow for the ball roll for soccer to actually move more like natural grass. So, that's a really good benefit, um, for, for the soccer players, and, and the ball doesn't necessarily die, um, it keeps the momentum up, and it certainly plays a little bit more realistic, uh, so the soccer players and football players can, can benefit from that. So, with all of that being said, we heard, um, systems that had monofilament, we heard systems that had the slip film only, and I think at the end of the night, it was quite easily, easy for us, uh, the architects, myself, as well as our construction management, who's installed many, many fields over their years, uh, to recommend the systems that have the blended fiber. It's going to last longer for you, it's going to be durable, and it's going to play very true for your athletes. So, what that did is that broke down, there's four bids that include the blended fiber. Base bid four, I'm looking at the large sheet here, actually, and then I'll go through some of that. The base bid four is a Shaw Sports Turf System. Base bid six is a Prograss System. Base bid eight is Astra Turf, and base bid 10 is A-Turf. So, going back to the Shaw Sports Turf System, um, the infill mix is also a very, very important criteria. The 30/70, which you'll see that, that line down, is a sand and rubber mix. It's 30% sand, 70% rubber. The sand is there to actually provide weight on the field. The existing field that you have now had no sand in it whatsoever, so the rubber crumb, the rubber infill that was in there was very light, water could get underneath that, and it was buoyant. It would, it could sort of rise up and, and be sort of moved in that, in that capacity. So, oftentimes, these turf manufacturers that are installing and recommending fields for, um, low land, low-lying areas with water, they recommend a combination system. The combination system provides more weight, so that 30/70 mix uses the sand to give durability down low, and then lets the rubber stay up to the top, so that it's doing its most, uh, protection, uh, for the athletes and for the foot strikes. Um, so all of the systems that we're recommending have that 30/70. So, that right there is already an improvement on your existing field, because it's heavier, and the 30/70 is also the trend. The, um, ASTM and all of the testing laboratories for the Gmax ratings are acknowledging that 30/70 as the most successful blend for an infill mix. So, then we go down into the fiber, uh, sizes. Um, all of the four shaded and all of the base bids being considered, um, all have very similar, um, sizes. So, the fiber denier is all about 10,000. Um, the pile height is two and a quarter inches, that's typical, we, we wanted them to have that spec, so it looks more natural, and it plays natural, because it's a little bit longer, um, thread. Another criteria is the pile weight, and that is very important for the, the thicker carpet, the thicker, um, and the heavier, uh, fabric, uh, and, and that's something that we, we specified a 44-ounce minimum, and we're seeing that the Shaw comes in at 46 ounces, which is an upgrade or a little improvement over what we base specified. Um, and then the base bid six, you'll see, it, it says meets, but that's a 44-ounce. Um, and each of the other ones are, are 44 or 46. So, that's a very good, uh, criteria that they're providing. Uh, the tuft bind, primary backing, secondary backing, all of those criterias meet the specs. So, that's just sort of the overall system, the strength of the system, and the durability of the system. They all meet the impact attenuation, the Gmax rating. Um, we, we've been informed, it was quite informative the other night, that they are typically, in the past, Gmax has been, uh, limited to 200, so it had to be below 200 over the life of the field. They're finding that that is not as successful these days, and that they're rewriting the codes and the ASTM, um, requirements, and that's going to be 170, um, starting as early as April this year. So, we got confirmation from all of the turf representatives that the Gmax is going to be, uh, provided at 160 to 170 for the life of this field. So, you're going to get really good play, safety for the, for the, uh, athletes. Warranty, uh, they all provide an eight-year warranty. There are upgrades for the, uh, for a 10-year warranty, there's fine print involved with that, uh, and so, we're very happy. We basically base our spec on an eight-year warranty, which is very typical across the board. So, all of these recommended systems, uh, provide that. Um, the total system weight, uh, they're about, uh, 78 to 800 ounces per square yard, so they're all comparable in that, um, regard. The one thing now, so I'm saying that a lot of these are very comparable, the one thing that impressed me the most about the Shaw was the technology of how they budded the seams together. Um, the Prograss field that you have down there right now is a lapped splice, so the fabric comes in 15-feet rolls, and it's lapped spliced together, it's threaded. It's amazing, but it, it telegraphs through. That lap is actually a little bit of a, you know, ge- uh, geometric, um, bump in the field. Over the years, that bump actually telegraphs through, and you can see that through ball roll, you can actually feel it on your feet. Um, so that is something that we want to try and stay away with, and some of these systems, especially the Shaw, was a very good butt system, um, where they take it, and they take the two carpets, they thread them together. Another bonus of that, or benefit of that butt system, is that the thread acts as an expansion and contraction joint. That field is seeing some incredible heat during the, the, the days, and cold at night, it's going to move. So, a butt joint allows that movement to happen, so you don't get those ripples through the crumb and through the turf fabric. Um, so that's a really good feature, that's something that Shaw recognized and is done designing towards, and it, it is certainly, um, one of the, uh, the great features of that product. Another thing that Shaw does that made a lot of sense when they presented the other night, is they actually put their butt seams in between their white yard markers. The, and the way that they do that, the reason they do that is twofold, so that those seams are being sewn together by a person out in the field. He's down on his hands and knees, he's getting beat down by the sun, he may have a bad day, he may waver that. If you're sitting up in this, the bleachers, like you all have, that vantage point is incredibly, you know, telling. So, that is, any waiver in that, the, the bind is going to be sort of enhanced or increased because of the white line. It's going to waiver, and you're going to be able to see that. So, by putting those joints, those butts, in between the white lines, in the green, that almost goes away. So, that gets you a nice finish installation. One thing about your stadium is that you have a really good vantage point, so we want So that is something that we want to try and stay away with, and some of these systems, especially the Shaw, was a very good butt system where they take it, and they take the two carpets, they thread them together. Another bonus of that, or benefit of that butt system, is that the thread acts as an expansion and contraction joint. That field is seeing some incredible heat during the days and cold at night. It's going to move. So a butt joint allows that movement to happen so you don't get those ripples through the crumb and through the turf fabric. So that's a really good feature. That's something that Shaw recognized and is designing towards, and it is certainly one of the great features of that product. Another thing that Shaw does that made a lot of sense when they presented the other night is they actually put their butt seams in between their white yard markers. And the way that they do that, the reason they do that is twofold, so that those seams are being sewn together by a person out in the field. He's down on his hands and knees, he's getting beat down by the sun, he may have a bad day, he may waver that. If you're sitting up in the bleachers like you all have, that vantage point is incredibly, you know, telling. So that is, any waiver in that, the bind is going to be sort of enhanced or increased because of the white line. It's going to waiver, and you're going to be able to see that. So by putting those joints, those butts, in between the white lines, in the green, that almost goes away. So that gets you a nice finish installation. One thing about your stadium is that you have a really good vantage point, so we want that to be an attractive, a nice, successful installation. So this is one way to get there. And then another feature about putting the butts in between is that, you know, they asked, Charlie, where would you line up your, for a wind sprint or for a scrimmage? You line up on the white line. All of that force coming off when you're starting your run is putting pressure down on that joint and causing that to separate. So by putting that in the middle of the line, it's seeing much less impact in a specific location. So I think that that just, Shaw really impressed me with the way they engineered their system and the installation of the system. ProGrass's system is, I think that, you know, really, we want to come down, and if you'd like to come and feel these systems, and I'll show you which ones they are. ProGrass's system, nothing necessarily stood out. It meets the specifications, and it is certainly a fine product. The AstroTurf is also a fine product, and the A-Turf. So really what I'm focusing on are the two lower bids. The Shaw is a low bid. If you turn to the smaller sheet now, we can go and look at sort of how those numbers laid out. So I also have gray columns on these. Base bid four is grayed out, and if you look down at the bottom, the number for that, the base bid for that system is 555,000. The bidder for that is Vasco Asphalt. Base bid six, the Blend OT by ProGrass, that is the low bid out of all four of these, and that's 546,833. Second page, you'll see the numbers for the AstroTurf Q44. AstroTurf had the low bid on that, and that was 558,766. And then the A-Turf System is 570,000, and that is a Vasco Asphalt price. So you might wonder why Vasco and Palumbo have numbers for each of these turf manufacturers because those are installers that have built a relationship, built success over the years of installing all of these manufacturers' turf in very successful installations. One of the things that was very, very evident on Tuesday night was how quality concerned these companies are. They are not going to install a field that is going to not have them asked back. They're not going to install a field that is, you know, put them at jeopardy for their marketing and their advancement. And so what they do is they recognize installers in the area, and Vasco was certainly one of those. Each one of those, you can see, each one of those turf systems, with the exception of ProGrass, I think, gave a number to Vasco and said, "We'd be more than happy to have you install our field." We heard that the other night. They all spoke about that. Vasco wasn't present, but they all offered that information and said, "We see that you have Vasco bidding this, we're very comfortable with that." And that was really good to hear because you have actually two choices here for a very good installer to put in a turf system, and one of them happens to be very competitive for the price. So with that being said, if we turn to the last page, as you remember, I was here a while ago, and before we went out to bid, just to sort of give you a synopsis on what the documents we're going to include when we went out to bid, some of those were additional base bids. Base bid 12 was to repair the stone wall. So we asked the contractors to include a price for 100 square feet of repointing and cleaning the wall, just to repair some of that where the joints are popping out and there's a void in there. And you can certainly see that some of the grass and the weeds are growing through that, so that would all be repaired. So that's what base bid 12 was. Base bid 13 is a compacted gravel base that is underneath the Jersey barriers that are being donated by Green Acres. So that's a 4-inch-thick by 2 feet wide compacted gravel to set the Jersey barriers on it to give a nice, solid foundations so that they stay there. The Jersey barriers are put in place to prevent water from overflowing the stream and hitting the field anytime in the future. So it's a secondary measure, sort of a redundant measure, to make sure that this never happens to you again with the water. And then finally, the 14, base bid 14 is new PVC conduit. That's installed. Since we're tearing off the turf, putting in some gravel and repairing the existing gravel is a perfect opportunity to put conduit in the, around the perimeter curbing to get some power to where we need it, to the 25-second clocks, to the bleachers, and over to the other fencing. So you really have a little bit more future, or potential in the future, to tap into that conduit and provide power where you need to. So it's a really good opportunity to do that. So we gave you a price so that you could consider that. So down at the bottom of the second page, we have the red, the blue, the purple, and the green numbers. The base bid numbers are just that, the base bids for each of those systems. Base bid 12 is included in there. Base bid 13 is included in there, and base bid 14. So they're quite competitive as far as what the costs are for the base bids, with the exception of ProGrass's number for the wall. And just to talk about for a second, for the wall price, that is something that we knew needed to be done. We were talking, you know, with the district when we did the maintenance building, maybe we could do something with the wall then. The stadium comes around, maybe we can do something with the wall then. What this was done was to give you a price just to know what the ballpark is. We could certainly have one of these contractors do it, or you could self-perform the work, or do it with a project, even bid it and get prices that's non-pervailing wage. That's also a nice feature. So that just gives you an idea, you could award that or not. I certainly think that if I go out and just to recommend it, I would feel comfortable taking it off of the recommendations tonight and self-performing it. These are turf installers, and they, and you can sort of see based on the swing of the numbers, the 21,000, they didn't fully understand what was involved there, so they put a number at it. You know, they didn't want to be excluded for not putting a number in, but I think you'd probably realize some better numbers and some better quality if you actually take it out of the turf replacement project. So that's an option. Base bid 13 and 14, I would recommend keeping those in because it's part of the actual stadium and part of the improvements and the conduit, so that would be something that I would recommend. So what we looked at was the total for all of those, and I totaled those up, you know, in the column that's labeled total. Then I took the less insurance number, and that is an insurance number where we asked ProGrass to give us a price on a system that is very similar to what is in the stadium now that had been damaged. So that is a monofilament fiber that is an all rubber crumb, that is a wood nailer around that doesn't include the concrete curbs or the railings or the fencings or anything like that. So that's the number that they felt appropriate for if you were to replace that system right now. So, and then base bid 1B included the earthwork prep. So there's some work to regrade the gravel because the flooding came in and sort of rippled that and moved some of the gravel. So they had a budget as well of like $22,000 to repair the gravel. So with those two, those equaled 448,557. So just for, you know, like an exercise to see, now, these are numbers that we're just getting from the bidders, not necessarily talking to the insurance company by any means. But it gives you what the district's responsibility will be, the district portion. So that, you know, for the base bid for the Vasco Asphalt, the district's portion would be 124,400. Base bid six would be 130,000. Base bid eight would be 129,000, and 139 for base bid 10. But then I took it out one step further, and I removed base bid 12 for the stone wall and did a little bit of math here. It's not on your sheets unfortunately because I just did it on the fly here, but if you take the wall out, base bid four, the district's responsibility would be 114,443. Base bid six would be 108,847. Base bid eight is 115,513, and base bid 10, 129,443. Now, those numbers that I just spoke about, they're not confirmed numbers by any means. They're still negotiation with the insurance company ongoing, but this is just a ballpark based on the bids and how the numbers came in that, you know, it's for discussion purposes at this point. But I think if you're comfortable in the 110 to 125 range, as Jack said, that is money that is very, it is a fraction of what you would pay if you would replace that field. You can see what the bids are to replace that field. You're looking at 450 to 600,000 to replace that field now. In order to get improvements for 114,000, 110,000 of a concrete curb, raising the field, regrading it, putting new gravel in, fencing, ADA accessibility, I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the district to enter into option four that Jack said and to do this. So going back to the two low bids, I would, I'd feel comfortable with both of those, those numbers. However, I was actually really, really impressed with the response and the recognition of Vasco's installation quality. I don't think, and I know that they've installed quite a few of the fields that Echos have designed, as well as the turf manufacturers, so I really think that a good installation and a contract that is going to get in and meet your schedule would actually be your second highest number, which would be base bid four. You know, the 555,000, take out base bid 12, add 1,000 for base bid 13, 7,000, and the total for that would be 563,000. And then you'd only owe a fraction of that because of the insurance money that's coming towards the district. That is, I think, the big picture, and that's where I feel comfortable with and making the recommendation, as well as, and of course, I said that Vasco is a very good installer. I really like this Shaw carpet, so I really would like you to come down and see that and feel that. We could even pass it around, it's actually light enough. Let's.
Mark, just to, that's the second lowest number, not the second highest, right?
Second lowest.
Right.
Second highest.
Right. This is a kind of, it feels, it is absolutely like real. Stand there, stand by, and then usually the rubber problem, if you go see a stand, it's a very. Want to send the ProGrass one around to Mark, please?
Sure.
Anybody want to start with questions?
Mark, if it's an installation issue, Vasco will work on it. If it's actually turf, like tearing, the turf manufacturer will do it, so Shaw would come and do that. The actual work, or the actual warranty is through Shaw.
Okay.
Yeah. And another thing, I was also impressed with some of the information that the companies gave us the other night. These companies that interviewed have been around for a while. With the exception of one, the Motts Group, I haven't dealt with them before, but oftentimes these warranties are only as good as the turf company and if they're in business. There's many, many turf companies that come and go. Shaw has backing, monetary backing, because they primarily started as a carpet industry, and Warren Buffett is an owner. He has financial means to keep Shaw in business. So I think that's a good thing. That warranty is going to be a successful warranty. It's going to get you your eight, and if we even talk about a 10-year warranty. That is, that was a really good feature. I think the presentation hit some of the key points the other evening. ProGrass has also been around, AstroTurf has been around. I don't think we have a problem with that, but really, if you're going to have a warranty backing, backup, Shaw is certainly one of the top players in that.
Was Shaw the one that had the rows closer together than the other ones?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what I thought.
That's right. And what's a nice feature is that it's closer together, but it still drains above some of the other competitors. So it's the type of backing, the technology they put into it, you do not want the water ponding on it, and they can, you know, I've heard some presentations where they say, you know, in a pretty big rain, you're playing on it 15 minutes later, you know, and it's coming down. So it's 20, I think, carpet, it's 20 inches per hour, so that's a, that's certainly a good feature to have. In talking with the turf companies, they were not impressed with the initial installation. They didn't hold that back. They, oftentimes, they would walk away from that kind of an installation. They would not install that turf with that lightweight, you know, sort of, and it met the needs at the time, and there's nothing wrong with that by any means. It actually worked and got through quite a few years, and it did what it needed to do. But they were very happy with the design and the concrete curbing. That is what they're very used to putting in. So the concrete curbing does two things for this instance. It raises the field up, it creates a bathtub effect, so the water will dam up against it and not even hit the field. If in fact the water hits the field, the concrete curb is anchored into the ground and the turf's not going anywhere. This turf system, these are very good turf systems that drain incredibly well, and many of the manufacturers said that, you know, if it floods, there's silt that obviously is there, they come in and they spray it off, and you're playing on it in two, three days later. And the concrete curbing will certainly give you that potential to make this thing last as possible. And it's a one-time cost. That's another thing. This concrete curbing will be there for the life of your field, and you're going to get it for a fraction of the cost it would be if it was installed, you know, without the unfortunate event.
Does Vasco have anybody right around this area? I mean, if we have a problem, they're coming from Ohio.
They are.
Do they have offices around here?
They do not, but they have enough of staff that they're there within that day. We've had callbacks with Vasco on some of our projects, you know, just to go out, do some warranty repair, maintenance repair, and their turnaround is absolutely great. I don't have any problem with that. You know, sure, they're in Ohio, but it's still relatively local enough for them. They install so many.
Where are there any local fields that they've put in around here?
Look, I think if I looked at their sheet right, they did that Shawlroy Field where the boys played this year.
Shawlroy Field?
I thought that was on the list. I can look for my sheet here.
Yeah, they've, I'm pretty sure they installed Pine Richland. That's a field turf field.
But I just wondered how many, because ProGrass has put in Collinsville, they've put in Hempfield, they've put a lot up right around here.
Correct.
That we could go out and look at.
Yeah, but.
Shawlroy, I'll be down there on Saturday.
Yeah.
Rasslin' Tournament, and I will, I'll talk to Jenkins, he's down.
But here is also an interesting fact, is that they, ProGrass, all of the turf manufacturers will hire Vasco to put their turf in, to put their base in, and to build their curbing and things like that. So very well, it could be a ProGrass system there, but Vasco may have done the work. So it's interesting, you know, Vasco is through.
That's not what the gentleman said the other night, they do their own ones. Am I right or wrong, from ProGrass?
ProGrass, they'll install their turf, but they sometimes hire out the base. So they'll actually build, they'll have a contractor build the base. Yeah, some of them do it and some of them don't. Some of them self-perform. I know the Motts Group self-performs. I'm pretty sure Shaw will use Vasco both ways. But yeah.
Indiana, Shawlroy, just going down the list here to get the ones that's closest. Keel College, Beaver High School, Hickory High School, that's just the name of a few. Indiana High School.
Gateway's listed.
If you're going to Allegheny, you can name a few.
Yeah, yeah.
Also the Pittsburgh River Hounds at New Stadium down by Station Square is on here. Duke King University.
Peter's Township High School.
Anyone else have questions or comments?
Biggest concern, I'd like, is anything underground, I want it to be perfect, so we have no problems.
They're all.
My biggest concern, because I don't want to have to tear this up again in a couple years, because we had a drainage problem or anything like that.
Absolutely, and I took a note the other night, I think Field Turf told us about it, is the way that they'll test for the drainage. They know that, you know, above and beyond. And the thing is, is they're not going to want to install their field over something that's not working anyways, because they'll be called back later. So I think, you know, you're going to benefit from that fact, and then we're going to watch them. We're not going to let them start to.
Who's responsible if something happens later on, that it comes back, that the drainage wasn't checked out right, or is the installer responsible for that, for the whole thing?
Yeah, the installer would be responsible for that, so let's say Vasco is the installer. He's going to make sure that he checks all the drainage, and he's going to probably focus on your main collector that goes out to the, both of the outlets, and then the connector pipes that come into it. The water really had some damage in front of the bleachers, so they'll check all of that, and they'll, they're, they will address it. It's not included in the bids, but we would watch that on a time and materials basis. So let's say they had to have some extra time, a few days, to pull off the gravel, replace some piping. We'll check that very closely, and they'll do time and material slips. You're familiar with it probably from the maintenance building, any of the change orders. It's documented daily, so that, it's not a situation where you just say, "How much is it going to cost lump sum?" And then you pay it. You watch it every day, and we'll manage those costs.
Your production manager will be there watching this stuff, right?
Correct, yeah, and it's a fast one, so we'll be down every week, and if they're pulling it off, our production, or our construction department and myself will come down, and we'll be here. We'll spend some time to make sure. We know how critical it is to have that draining, and it's a wild card at this point, so we want to be here and make sure that it's protected, or in perfect situation, condition, before you put something new on top of it. Very good, I feel you on that, I do.
Does this one include the groomer? Because I'm not sure what the.
Yeah, they all include the groomer. Yeah, it was a base of the spec, so they all include the toe behind groomer.
Anyone else have questions or comments?
Mark, what was the name that, that's that they do?
to, they're going to saturate it and then they're going to check it on a certain interval and make sure that it dissipates and that the moisture content is gone. If it isn't gone based on the rate that they want, they'll start to tear into it and look at it. But that's the principle of the testing. So they'll do that at locations all the way down the field. A little bit of a wild card is, is we have construction drawings or sort of submittal drawings from Progress. They did the initial field. We don't know if they were installed exactly on those locations. So we'll do some investigative, you know, scraping off the gravel in order to check all of that.
Now will Vasco do that checking of the rubber to see if they can recycle like that one company talked about?
Yeah, they can certainly do that. I haven't talked to Shaw, but they can all, they can all do that. Some of them, I talked to AshaTurf today about that and they said that they wouldn't recommend putting the, like recycling the rubber, taking it to the parking lot and then putting it back on this field. They really want to get it off, clean it, put it on another installation. And I was interested to hear what their value would be. It's about $13,000 from AshaTurf in order to do that recycling. Wasn't as much as I thought, actually. But they, because it was flooded, they'll take a little bit more precautionary measures in order to clean it. So, and that was something that I knew along when I was bidding or doing the documents, but I didn't want to risk it and I just wanted to keep all the bids apples to apples so that was all new. But now this is maybe a benefit that the district can, you know, receive a little bit of a credit for some of their recycled rubber.
Now will they decide if they do that or can we ask them to do?
Yeah, we'll ask them. We'll go into contract with somebody and talk to them right off the bat. Say, you know, the district is now interested in recycling. Give us a proposal for a change order credit and if you're willing to do that, and I think they will be. You know, and the trend of recycling and environmental friendly installations and construction, it's a main, there's a whole, there's companies that do that only, recycle, you know, field turf.
I agree. I found it, I mean, I'm all for recycling. I think it's sort of the cost benefit should be weighed on it.
Yeah.
Especially if we could use it in another site too. So I think just arbitrarily say, we insist, I mean, it sounded good at the end there for him to say that.
Yeah, exactly.
That strikes its all its value, but I, I'd hate to say that that's, it has to be a, you know what I mean? That it has to be for our field if it really is not a cost benefit basis good for us.
That's right. So we'll just have a conversation with the contractor and say that it is something that the district is, you know, considering. Let's talk about it. Give us some pricing and then you can go from there. I don't think that we should, and that's why we didn't, we shouldn't consider our decision tonight based on maybe a value we could get back, you know? We're looking at base bids and we're looking at the hard numbers from the documents and make a decision based on those.
Anyone else have questions or comments? Does anyone want to throw out a motion?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I know it's been discussed and I know Jack just said about the fact of the four options that we have and the first one would be to play our home games away and then that's understandable that that's not a reasonable expectation. The second one was to replace the sod field, to go back to what we had before. I had spoken with Charlie, our athletic director, and wanted to know what other stadiums had sod fields. There are only two in the entire area that have sod fields. And I called them up to ask them, you know, again, I wanted to know what problems they might have. Both of them, Frazier and Derry, both of them play limited games on their sod field. I think Frazier said they probably play about 17 games on their field. Derry played probably about 25 with 30. But Derry also said that they, in playing their games, they have a full-time maintenance man that handles that field. That's his only job is to handle working on that field. And again, as I said, this isn't to say that we shouldn't consider the sod, but again, there are certain reasons why we went originally with a turf field. And I think if you look now and you look around what everybody's doing, just because everybody does it, doesn't mean we should do it. But there are very few left and the ones that are left are probably spending a lot of money to maintain those fields. So I just want to throw that out because I know I've heard people say, well, you know, just throw the money back in and we'll get a sod field and we won't have to worry about this again. But it's not just that cut and dry.
I was on the board when we had the sod field and we spent, I don't have the numbers, but a fortune every year on reseeding, on topsoil. And then that was when soccer was first coming into the district. We had problems because we couldn't play both soccer and football on the field. We couldn't utilize it and sometimes in the middle of the season, we had to find other fields for people to play on. It was, it really was a headache. It was a real headache.
And the maintenance on this field is basically every two weeks, I think you take about two hours and you roll it and you sort of rough, rough up the fibers. So it's a pretty affordable system once it's in. So I definitely appreciate your comment.
I appreciate what Mr. Mollinari was saying, that I was one of the traditionalists who held out for a sod field and was liking the natural. But we could never see the girls' soccer team out in the stadium because, and it was always been a debate to which, whether you could get the midget football in there and the phys ed, the phys ed classes then that have been able to use it. So I think it's good to have it in there as a part of the mix as an option, but I, I think it's really the way to go and to do it, and to do it as well as we can and to fix it up in a good way.
Mr. Swink, question for you and then comment from you and Lee, but doesn't softball and baseball teams also use it in the spring because they can get on that field because it dries so quick as opposed to their fields? Do you guys want to come up to the podium?
Yep. Both the softball and the baseball team use that in the spring. It gives us an opportunity when we wouldn't be able to get on the fields, you know, like probably like this year is going to be. It would be very late probably getting onto the surface where they're able to go down there and actually play and still be outside. So the field's really used a lot more than what you think when you get down there and, you know, a grass field if we had it, you know, they're very nice at the beginning, but about two or three games in, they're very, you know, they get very nasty quickly, especially like we talk about soccer. These two systems you have, they're almost like natural grass, exactly the way the ball roll goes. You know, you look at our field, we have at SES, it's probably a beautiful soccer field, but it takes a beating already. If you look at the goals, there's dirt, there's holes that get put into it and, you know, and we have a player here, she can even tell you that. It's, there's no, there's no comparison really to a turf field. And then you look at the safety, that's the biggest thing. Safety on a turf field, it's level, you know, there's no divots and I think overall we'd be much, we'd be very pleased if we, you know, replaced this field and put it the way it's supposed to go. You know, when you look at what we're offering here with the Shaw and Progress, Progress, that field we had was probably, it was one of the nicest fields I was ever on. I don't think there's an issue with Progress's turf. I think part of the problem with it was just the system, the way it was put in. I would be, if you, if you select a Progress, I'd be happy with that. I've been on several Shaw fields. It happened when we played soccer for the boys. We went to Thomas Jefferson. That was a new field that Shaw put in. It was very nice, a beautiful field. Penn Trafford called me today just to tell me about Shaw's system. They have that. They've been very happy with them. Anytime they need any maintenance or anything, they're there for them. So he said he would just recommend, he has no contact as far as any, you know, anything to put into it, but he just said they're very good if we were thinking about it. So I just thought I'd throw that out there as far as, they seem pretty good as far as their maintenance as well. Any other questions?
While I was at Jeanette, they had a natural turf field at Jeanette. We always had a problem with trying to get the center of the field to grow. We had to put in booster pumps on our water system to get it irrigated. I attended a seminar at Penn State. I attended a seminar at Penn State and we took a core sample, one of their natural grass fields. It's not just sod. The sand actually on a natural grass field extended down 16 inches. And when we pulled the core up, so just a regular natural field really isn't just dirt and grass. It's actually a material for the root growth to occur in and it's a, they ran spikes every six inches apart and then they covered the entire field with sand and let the sand filter down in. And that was a drainage on the natural field. So it's, it's a pretty extensive system and I don't know what State College is doing now, but I understand they probably eliminate a lot of the natural grass field.
Anyone else have questions or comments? We have a motion from anyone?
One more thing. I don't know if this is the place for it, but I'll, since I'm here, you'll have to bear with me, okay? Since we were fortunate enough to have this happen at a time when we probably would have had replaced the field in a couple of years anyway, it's certainly to our advantage to get a brand-new field, start fresh for $114,000 maximum, could be less, but maximum. But my question is, why have we never built into our budget replacement of our field knowing that 10 years down the road, we're going to have to spend a half a million to $600,000 to put a new field in? It would seem reasonable that when we decide to do this, when it was originally put in, that that should have been a line item budget that we would have included so that at the end of the 12 years, we had actually established enough money knowing we were going to have to do that. Rather than leave that responsibility to a board, which we would be doing today if we do that, that most of us probably won't be here to have to worry about. It just seems like that's a logical thing to do since we do know that this is not a lifetime field. I know I've had a number of calls, people saying, I thought we had that field, it was for life. Well, I thought it was for life too, till I spent four and a half hours the other night finding out that not, my life is way longer than that field is ever going to last. So I just said, again, I just think it seems like it's a responsibility that we have somewhere along the line here, not to simply enter into this contract to get the field done, but to make sure that eight, 10, 12 years down the road, that another board does not have to sit here and say, well, you know, this year the field is gone and we have to put out $600,000. What are we going to do?
Mr. Mollinari might be able to answer that question better than I, but my understanding is that there is a portion of our fund balance that is earmarked for capital improvements and it's there for that purpose. So when a field replacement comes down the pike or a roof replacement or whatever, that's, that money comes out of that account that we put our surplus dollars into. This past year we put $200,000 surplus into there and then some of that money is already earmarked for capital improvement. But having said that, you know, I think you make a valid point that we tucked a little bit away each year and earmarked it for that, you know, that's.
Yeah, because capital improvements, again, we're saying there could be anything that we might come across. So again, it isn't specifically earmarked. I know we can't do the old social security lockbox here, but again, if it was actually a line item that we had depreciation technically on our field for 10 years, at that particular point in time, we would have the funds then to be able to say, it's earmarked and we don't have to worry about this when the field comes to. Again, I don't know if this is the appropriate place, but I.
Maybe.
Jim? Oh, in 93, you did something just like that. There's a provision in the, in the school code for establishing a capital reserve fund. Now you have some, some of your fund balance, what's called, in the general fund, it's called a committed assigned fund balance. You've got a reserve fund balance for your early retirement. You've got the fund balance committed for special circumstances and you have the unreserved amount. But we went to the measure, we adopted a capital reserve fund as per the school code. And we took money out of our general fund and we put it in that. So it was a separate bank account, a separate thing. And interest rates were very favorable back then, so it could grow. And also the board had the option each and every year to continue to add to it. We wanted to fund that for our future technology program because back in the early 90s, everybody was looking at, what are we going to do? When we drew the money out of that for our technology program, I put in the budget a repayment plan. So we borrowed the money from ourselves and I put a repayment plan in, a five-year repayment plan to replenish that reserve fund. So you could do that. Absolutely.
And especially given the fact that we were just talking about refinancing the bond and part of the thing that we said there was that money that we would save would be close to $50,000 a year over the life of the new bonds. That almost comes to what we would need to replace the field and it would just seem that it would be logical to do that. I'm just concerned that, like I said, 10 years from now, whoever's sitting here isn't trying to fight and scrap and save to try to figure out how to replace that field because it will have to be replaced at some point in time.
It's true. And when you put that line item in your budget, let's say you put in $50,000 a year, we transfer it to the capital reserve. Then every year you have to keep in mind that, you know, that's one of those line items that you don't want to cut. When it comes time, you're like, do we raise a mill or do we make cuts? Again, you'll have to fight that battle, say, look, we're funding that for the future. Absolutely.
Thank you for the point.
One more question for Mark. There's been some discussion about the center emblem. If this is voted on tonight, when does that have to be finally decided? Because a lot of them said as soon as contracts are signed, they're starting to build the carpet because it's built.
Yeah, well, they will not build the carpet until they submit drawings to us with the lines on it and the logo. So we'll have an opportunity to review it and I'll make sure that that doesn't overlap and that it is per specification. So they own that, they know that because I had an addendum where I shrunk the size of that. But I did miss that the soccer circle still has to go out over the half marks. So we'll work on that, but we have plenty of time because they'll start their documentation for the paper, paperwork, their insurance and bonds and such, and then they'll start this process.
Okay. We'll certainly have the board, you know, review that design, even if it's just something I sent you and asked, you know, give you a call to say, well, what do you think of it or we may have a special meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And if you want to change your end zone, you know, text and stuff, you can certainly do that. They're going to bid it to match what you had there before.
Okay.
Good question.
Anything else from anyone? Does anyone have a motion?
Oh, wait, one second.
Sorry?
The insurance company, the money we're giving off of them is $400 and some thousand dollars.
Just a second, what's he's coming up to?
I just wonder if anything might have changed or not, so that he might got a little generous. He give us a little bit more money?
Mr. DeFuria is engaged in an arm wrestling match right now with the insurance company. I don't know who's winning.
Well, let me, let me try to respond to that if I can. First of all, PSBA has your insurance and there's very few that cover turfs and very few that cover turfs for flood. So that we have this covered, I'm just so happy. And it's full replacement cost of like-kind and quality. And the reason it doesn't come up to the total amount is that we're making the foundation much better. So even though this was a 50-year flood, hopefully this will never happen again. But it's my job to get to school as much money as I can. I think Mark was being conservative, like a good banker, like a good CPA.
I think that was.
But I will, yeah, these are the worst-case scenarios out of the school. It's my job to do a lot better than that. I'm an attorney. I'm arguing some of these improvements may be necessary, even though they're not like-kind and quality to mitigate damage from ever happening again. So yes, we are on top of this and do everything we can to make this even better for the school. I did want to reemphasize what Dr. Mollinar said, though. This turf only had about three to five years, so you're getting brand-new turf, better quality. Technology is so much better, it's safer. I mean, I hate to say this could be a blessing, but it could be a blessing in disguise. The other thing we're very lucky on is timing. They need, these bids are about $200, $200,000 less than other bids because they need to work now. Come the summer, when everyone wants these turfs, these prices will go up. Timing couldn't be any better on this. I don't know if I answered your question.
No, that's fine.
Okay, good. Please, because if not, any questions from Dr. Mollinar or anyone else, please?
I have a comment, just to let the board members know that weren't there Tuesday. Thank you for coming out Tuesday to gather that information.
So, you're getting brand-new turf, better quality. Technology is so much better. It's safer. I mean, I hate to say this could be a blessing, but it could be a blessing in disguise. The other thing we're very lucky on is timing. They need... These bids are about $200,000, $200,000 less than other bids because they need to work now. Come the summer, when everyone wants these turfs, these prices will go up. Timing couldn't be any better on this. I don't know if I answered your question.
No, that's fine.
Okay, good. Please, because if not... Any questions from Dr. Molinar or anyone else, please?
I have a comment, just to let the board members know that weren't there Tuesday. Thank you for coming out Tuesday to gather that information. It'll help you with your battle with the insurance company. So, I'm glad you came out.
Well, I appreciate the business and I appreciate you inviting me to both meetings. Thank you very much.
Don has spent many hours on our field, on the phone, at meetings. So, he's really been an advocate on behalf of the district and I want to publicly thank him for that.
Well, thank you.
Don, before you leave, uh...
Yes, Bob.
Just to get something on the record here, if we were not to be able to take or chose not to take any of the bids and we were to say to the insurance company, "We'd just like the reimbursement for the $442,000 or so that they have said they would pay," would they give us $442,000 cash?
No, because you're not replacing the field. This would probably be a precedent because I don't know if anyone's just turned it down, but they would probably handle it then like they handle a building. They pay you actual cash value, which is replacement less depreciation. And that depreciation would kill us because this is a seven-year-old field. So, no, you would not get that amount at that point in time.
Not even half of it, probably.
Not even half. You may be lucky to get $100,000, Bob. So, I would much prefer to fight the replacement and get that value down, Mark's numbers down as much as I possibly can. I think that's the best interest of the school district, in my humble opinion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I would be ready for our superintendent to read a most... The recommended motion here of the Shaw Vasco, or if someone else would here, and then get that on... Try to get that on the table when we can discuss it further.
I see you want the Shaw motion. Is that what I understood you said?
That's what I heard is the recommended choice. See, hearing no reason not to go with the recommended.
All right. Then it is recommended that the board accept base bids four for the Shaw Legion 4G system in the amount of $550,000. Bid 13 in the amount of $1,000, and that is for the compacted gravel base. And bid 14, which is for the conduit in the amount of $7,000, as submitted by Vasco Asphalt. David, thank you for writing that down as people were talking.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel. Questions on the motion?
Is that about the stone mark?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, that was eliminated.
I do have a question, a motion. Did you say 550 or 555? Should be 555.
555.
Okay.
I can make sure the motion reads 46 instead of 4G.
Okay.
Yeah. If it matches the Legion 46.
Legion 46, very well. Thank you.
That's what I tried to write.
Six.
Any more discussions? Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
I'm a sports guy, but in good conscience, I can't vote for it, no.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Motion passes seven, one with one absent.
Mr. Paton, could we borrow your agenda so that Mrs. Torres can report that motion correctly?
Are they going to start tomorrow?
What about after the school calendar?
Shovel the snow off. Hey, Mark, are they going to start tomorrow?
After the school calendar, he wants to recognize Mr. Pastel as if he had bought it before, so we'll do that before recess. Yep, I'll be fine. School calendar revision?
All right. I sent a proposed school calendar revision home in your packets. I'd like you to disregard that and I would like you to look instead at the one that we handed you tonight. All right? And as I explained to you at our last meeting, and we actually discussed it, this at our superintendent's meeting, and I did receive a confirmation email from Harrisburg, that we are permitted to convert three in-service days that we had scheduled into Act 80 days that occurred during times students were in the buildings. So, therefore, those days would count as one day of student attendance and we would tack those in-service days then on to the end of the year for teachers. And we certainly... Dr. Scott and I have plenty of things that they can be working on for the betterment of the curriculum, so that's a good thing. And that plan would have graduated our seniors and had our last day of instruction as it was originally scheduled in the calendar for the last day of May, I believe it was. Then today happened. So, because today happened, we now have to tack one additional day on to the following week. So, as of right now, the calendar we're asking you to adopt would make the last day of student instruction the first Monday in June. And then the last teacher workday would be the second Monday in June. And we will hope that this is the last time we have to have this conversation.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Shipley. Questions on the motion?
Comment?
Comment?
We have tried to find ways to not move up the date of graduation and the amount of time the kids have to school, go to school, but I kind of think that defeats our whole purpose. We're here to educate these kids, not give them three days where they don't have to come into school. I think they're being short-changed by us doing this. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. This graduation will still be the same day or will have to change?
Yeah, we'll probably have to move. We need to check the regulations on that as to when we can have practices and if we can count certain days, but yeah.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Al?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Motion passes eight with one absent. I need a motion to suspend the rules for the bond counsel to speak. He needs a long drive home, so we're going to try to fit him in before we go to recess. Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight with one absent.
And Mr. Paton and I had spoken earlier this week about inviting Mr. Pastel to join us this evening and perhaps give some clarification to some of the information you got from Mr. Shelby in terms of the legalities and the ins and outs of things. And then I entertain any questions that you might have from a neutral expert, as it were. So, David, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think that probably the board is interested in hearing if you have two bond issues, how the 15 days plays into that, and if the board were to consider not using the current underwriter and instead go to a competitive system, why we would need to have a financial advisor and why people like you and me and probably our business manager can't be considered eligible for that kind of technical use of that term, financial advisor in the context of a bond issuance or the kind of bank, qualified bank loans that we might be involved in. So, that would be some of the areas. And then I would expect some board members to have some separate questions.
Okay. I have not seen any information from Chris Shelby or his firm, but I have an idea of the sort of thing that is being contemplated. The Series A of 2008 is outstanding in about $6,200,000 approximately.
Pull the mic up.
It's outstanding in about $6,200,000. Those can be redeemed at any time on 30 days' notice. So, refunding issue for that would be about $6,400,000. In addition, there's... I forget the exact amount of the Series A... Sorry, Series of 2005 bonds outstanding. Those are not currently callable, redeemable. They can be redeemed April 1, 2015. A bond issued to refund those would be about $7 million. And instead of simply replacing the new debt with the old, you would issue the new debt, put the proceeds into escrow for about a year, and use them to pay off the 2005 bonds. So, that's two issues. Together, that would total more than $10 million. The reason for separating them by 15 days relates to what's called bank-qualified bonds. Banks get a break on bonds that are bank-qualified in that they can deduct 80% of their cost of funds, essentially interest they pay on money they borrow from depositors, from other banks, that they use to buy those tax-dent bonds. It used to be, before 1982, they could deduct 100%. Now, for any general bond, they can't deduct any of that interest, but for bank-qualified bonds, they can deduct 80% of their interest expense. That translates into the market to a lower interest rate on bank-qualified bonds, which varies with the market. It's been as high as 0.5%. More typically, it's bound down around 0.25%, 0.3%. So, the goal is to issue debt that meets the bank qualification criteria. One of the... And there's a number of rules. One of them is that no more than $10 million of bonds issued by a school district in a calendar year can be designated as bank-qualified. So, we look at $7 million, $6.5 million, adds up to more than $10 million. How can you do that? Well, there's one exception, and that says that when you do a current refunding, such as the refunding of the Series A of 2008, where you redeem the old bonds within 90 days, then you only count the excess of your refunding bonds over the amount of the old bonds. So, if you have $6,200,000 outstanding, you issue $6,400,000 to refund it and $200,000 to count towards the $10 million limit. However, there is another rule, essentially an exception to the exception, which says that this approach doesn't work if the issue itself, as one issue, exceeds $10 million in size. So, we break it up into two issues and we have a nice, clear rule in the regulations that says if the bonds are sold at least 15 days apart, they are not part of the same issue. So, for that reason, you'd have to have two sales, one for the refunding of the Series A of 2008 and one for the refunding of the Series of 2005, in order for both of the refunding series to be bank-qualified and therefore eligible for the lower rate. So, that's the answer to the first question. Before we proceed with anything else, are any questions about that? I mean, this approach is basic meat and potatoes, structuring of bank-qualified bond issues and not an esoteric technique. This is not something that's being pioneered. In fact, I think in a previous year, I can't remember which one, we've done that with two issues in one year. As a matter of fact, I think it was the 2008. We had Series of 2008 and Series A of 2008. So, we did something very similar to that back then. The other one is on employing a financial advisor. Tax-dent bond markets are complicated, requires a lot of skills. I'm certainly not equipped to be a financial advisor and run a competitive bid on the bond issue. It requires a certain amount of staff, access to information, and subscriptions to information that I do not have. This is not expertise that I would expect any school business... School district business manager to have, with the possible exception of some of the major school districts, Philadelphia, Pittsburgh, and even they know better. They hire a financial advisor to do that sort of work. It would be possible just to do a bank loan without involving a financial advisor, without involving the bond markets. That's a more restricted set of skills. But then there's the basic question of, "Do you do a bank loan or do you do a bond issue?" And I'm not equipped to answer that question. Any more questions?
I have a... I'm not a direct question. I guess quite rudely. Clarification, and again, not dealing with securities and not knowing a whole lot about them. We talk about negotiated, okay? And we talk about competitive. Competitive in the sense that we would actually have to accept the winner of the competitive bid to do our negotiating. Is that correct?
Uh, no. Competitive...
Would you explain what that...
Negotiated sale under the debt act, you pick an underwriter with or without a financial advisor also on board. And then the underwriter presents a proposal and you decide if that's acceptable. You negotiate with them. You acquire them to show you information as to why that's a good rate, good price. And that's where a financial advisor can be helpful for a negotiated bid because you not can be equipped to do that yourselves. A competitive sale, under the debt act, technically a private sale upon invitation where... And it's typically done on internet platforms these days. All the disclosure documents are provided. There's a bid request for proposals that's circulated. And then on the appointed day, there's an electronic auction on the internet where competing groups of underwriters submit their bids. And at the end of the day and in the end of the auction, you have a final best bid. These are always structured so that the school district has a choice of not accepting any bid at all. And in the case of refunding, typically there's a minimum savings threshold and if that's not met, you do not go forward. So, you're not obligated to accept that low bid, but it's a way of obtaining the best bid. And you have a period of time in which to accept that.
Now, again, in lay terms, when I'm talking about competitive, when we select an underwriter that we want to do a negotiated bond with, if we brought in another underwriter just to present their case, that's not competitive bidding. That's just simply getting a second underwriter or a third underwriter to come in and tell us why they think they should be the underwriter we use to negotiate bond with.
That's right. And a competitive bid is an offer to sell the bonds. You accept that, the deal is done. It's locked in.
Right.
When you pick an underwriter, you don't have a deal yet. You've got competing underwriters who want your business. You select one. You still don't have a deal yet. When you do an actual competitive bid, the results of that competitive bid are an offer that you can act on and you can accept it.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions or comments? Thank you.
Pastel, thank you. Safe travels home, sir. Thank you for being here this evening.
Need a motion to recess for personnel?
I'm moved.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mr. Polakowski. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes...
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight with one absent. Do we have an interest of motion from anyone on the bond issue?
Mr. President, I have a form resolution for you. Plan A would be to do what we've been doing with Piper Jaffray, and it mentions the particular bond issues involved. And Plan B would be to... I hope I didn't run out of these. Go with a competitive process that you had been discussing last week.
Now, the Plan A, would that go with their option A or B? We don't need to decide that tonight?
Plan A would just...
Oh, that... No, it doesn't say whether you want to go with two sales or one total.
Plan A would authorize administration to sign a letter of engagement with them. Plan B would authorize us not to do that, but to seek conditional proposals.
Just making sure we're all on the same page.
Right.
We have a motion from Mr. Miller to adopt Plan A. Do we have a second?
What is Plan A?
It's coming around to you. So, we'll wait till... Wait for discussion till everyone gets it.
Plan A is a plan to retain Piper Jaffray and Plan B would be...
Mrs. Rhodes?
Are you asking us to seek competitive proposals from other underwriters?
No, no. Plan B is to gauge in the complete competitive process, hiring a financial advisor and becoming involved in setting up a competitive bid or seeking competitive bank proposals.
Okay.
Either way, with whatever the financial advisor would be... Well, he'd come back and recommend it and you'd have to approve.
Okay.
So, it is a more lengthy process, potentially more competitive.
So, we have a motion from Mr. Miller and a second by Mrs. Rhodes to get it on the table of Plan A. the table, of Plan A. So, we have discussion or comment? So, we'll go with the roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
No.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
No.
Pardon?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Motion passes six, two with one absent. Is that correct? I believe so. Six, two with one absent. So, administration can proceed with that, and we'll move on to personnel. It is recommended that the board retroactively appoint Dr. Timothy Salum as school physician for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year. Motion?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Colero. Question on the motion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Motion passes eight with one absent. Additions to day-to-day substitute list. It is recommended that the board approve the additions to the day-to-day substitute list as presented to you. Need a motion? Motion by Mr. Miller, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Motion passes eight with one absent. Assistant track and field coaches? It is recommended that the board approve the recommended list of assistant track and field coaches for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year as follows. High school first assistant varsity coach Chuck Britton at a salary of four thousand ninety-four dollars. Track assistant Zach Cavalier at a salary of two thousand five hundred sixty dollars. Track assistant Josh Pejak, salary two thousand five hundred sixty dollars. At the middle school, Jean Spadero, and Brian Pritz, each at a salary of two thousand three hundred nineteen dollars. Motion?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Motion passes eight with one absent. Additional driver for Grooms Transit?
It's recommended that the board approve an additional, an additional driver for Grooms Transit, Crystal Power Vision of Scottsdale.
Motion?
So be it.
Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Colero. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Motion passes eight with one absent. FMLA for Julie Kaler?
It's recommended that the board approve an FMLA leave for middle school social studies teacher Julie Kaler from approximately May second, two thousand fourteen through the end of the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year.
Motion?
So be it.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Rhodes. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Motion passes eight with one absent. FMLA for Krista McComack?
It's recommended that the board approve an FMLA for elementary fifth grade teacher Krista McComack from approximately April sixteenth, two thousand fourteen until the end of the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year.
Motion?
So be it.
Motion by Mrs. Shipley, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. Questions? Roll call.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Motion passes eight with one absent. Ninety-day unpaid leave for Lila Willdie?
It's recommended that the board approve a ninety-day unpaid leave for cafeteria worker Lila Willdie for the restoration of health.
Motion? Motion by Mr. Beistel, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Question on the motion? Roll call.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Motion passes eight with one absent. Assistant girl softball coach?
It's recommended that the board approve Wes Nicholson as an assistant girl softball coach for the two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen school year.
Motion?
So be it.
Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Motion passes eight with one absent. And we already had the presentation. So, student reports, please.
Congratulations to January Spode Stoller and Kelsey King. Congratulations also to January Spirit of Southmoreland student Sarah Rock. The following books have been contributed to the Southmoreland Senior High School library recently. Ben Dwayne by Mr. Levi Miller, donated by Dr. Catherine Fight. Out of Harm's Way by Terry Crisp. The Cat Lady of Concord by Floyd Morway. Saving Lives and Changing Hearts by Rob Leylaw. Chicken Soup for the Cat Lover's Soul by Health Communications. Chicken Soup for the Dog Lover's Soul by Health Communications. And Chicken Soup for the Pet Lover's Soul by Health Communications. So, above-listed six books have been placed in memory of Linda McCrockett, Mr. Andy Yartin's sister, courtesy of the Southmoreland Administrators and Board of Education.
Students raised twenty-five hundred dollars for the Make Wish Foundation through participation in Bump It Up, which is an elimination volleyball event. Snow King donations, in which students donated spare change to vote for court membership, and the adoption of plush polar bears. Over three hundred students participated by playing volleyball or helping to plan and implement this event, which was sponsored by Student Council. We are also pleased to announce that six high school students represented Southmoreland at the PMEA District Band Festival on February sixth through the eighth at Penn Hills High School. These students selected were Stephanie Firestone, Mallory Garstek, Katie Kimmel, Blaise Wazneski, Jason Monroe, and Ben Wilkows. News from WIAN. Volunteers have been participating at Market Day orders on various Fridays throughout the months. Upcoming events: our kindergarten kickoff, the SES carnival, March for Parks, Bonny Hall for Autism, Dime Wars, and Walk Now for Autism Speaks. Also, the National Honor Society will be instituting the Southmoreland National Honor Society Scholarship Fund. The criteria for the scholarship is still being worked out. However, members of National Honor Society plan to fundraise in order to raise money to sponsor the fund. We have decided to sell raffle tickets for cash and gift cards, which were solicited by members of National Honor Society. The drawing will be held on March seventeenth, and we are selling one hundred tickets at five dollars a piece.
The Alpha Cores team competed Wednesday, February twelfth, at Mount Pleasant against schools such as GCC, Dairy, and Mount Pleasant. Varsity took the silver medal for the day, and junior varsity took the gold medal for the day. The Mont Trial team competed on January thirtieth, performed well, but lost to Penn Trafford. The Defense team will compete on February eighteenth against Somerset at the Greensburg Courthouse. Reading team is preparing for the March competition at Seaton Hill. Thirty books are included on the reading list, and questions will be asked about each book, and these titles include The Last Lecture, Sarah's Key, and The Volonters Sisters.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. CWCTC report?
Yes, we've been on January fifteenth. There's a short beep. Some of the things we talked about, we approved Michael Christ, the wellness instructor for maternity leave. Permission was granted to hire a long-term substitute for the wellness program. Permission to hire a temporary, part-time, day-to-day instructional assistant. Permission to pursue the sports medicine and exercise therapy program for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. And we, uh, permission was granted for the Culinary Arts Club to attend state competition at a Lancaster resort from March nineteenth, twenty, and twenty-one. Some things that else we talked about. We discussed limiting the number of board members to attend conferences. Some of the board members, it was about half and half. They want to limit it, limit it to three, and the rest of the board wants everybody to go attend all. I wasn't sure what our policy was. I, I thought, I thought it was two. We sent two board members to the national. When I talked to Jack, and he said, everybody's always invited, he showed me the policy. So, I have to get back with them and see how we do it. They just asked how other districts did it. Construction update. Whole project is about seventy percent completed. That's a six-point-five million dollar project. It's the first major renovation in thirty-nine years for the new board members. We talked about this for a while before you guys got on. That's split nine ways between all the districts. The roof is still at thirty percent. No work has been done on that because of the weather. Interior work is going on as planned, and outside work has slowed down. That concludes my report.
Question that goes along with that report. This is Piper Jim. Since the CWCTC construction project is a construction, can we put the bond refinance money towards our payment for that? No? Okay. Thank you. WIU report? Mrs. Love is not here. PSBA liaison report?
Yes. An article titled Reform of PA Charter Schools, Long Overdue, written by State Rep. Joe Emrick, who represents the one-hundred-and-thirty-seventh district in Northampton County, and also State Rep. Mike Reese, who represents the fifty-ninth district in parts of Fayette and Westmoreland Counties, and discusses the bill, the House Bill six-one-eight. Last September, a bipartisan vote passed House Bill six-eighteen that addresses the investment in charter school education, as well as the double dip on pensions that currently benefits cyber charter school. House Bill six-eighteen would create a matrix to measure and assess the academic performance of charter and cyber charter schools, which would require new and renewal applicants to establish a teacher evaluation system. Bipartisan charter school funding advisory commission would be created, consisting of parents, teachers, administrators, and legislators, and their purpose would be to address inequities in the formula for funding and make recommendations to the General Assembly. And House Bill six-eighteen would enable direct payment to charter and cyber charter schools from the Department of Education. Currently, cyber charter schools receive a hundred percent reimbursement of their costs from our local, uh, school districts, and fifty percent from the state. House Bill six-eighteen would eliminate the pension double dip. As a result, school districts would retain approximately eighty-four million over two years. Limits would also be placed on the reserves charter and cyber charter schools are able to hold. With any excess over the limit to be returned to the school districts that paid out tuition to the charter schools. With this, in eliminating the double dip, the average saved by each school district statewide would be three hundred thousand. So, let's hope that the state senate gets on board with the House and passes House Bill six-eighteen. Lastly, the handout from Mr. Morenelli titled Governor Corbett's two-fif- fourteen, fifteen education budget that he passed out last week. I thought it had a lot of good information in it, and so I would urge all of you, when you get a few minutes, to read over it, because it really does go over a lot of stuff about the, about the governor's budget and how it's going to impact districts and so forth. So, that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President, can I just piggyback on that?
Yes.
I just got a note from, I, I've been following this some too, and I really appreciate your, your highlighting that. We talked about the double dipping and, and the cost to us. I think it's about a half a million, uh, the charter schools of our budget that goes to that every year. So, a three hundred thousand, a three hundred thousand savings would be a, be very substantive in, in, in our district. But, but what I was going to note here politically is that, that Kim Ward sent me a letter this week of congratulating being elected again, and she's a senator. So, I, I think to, now, I can't move for her. She doesn't know I'm, I have a Scottsdale address, but I'm in Fayette. But, I think for all of us to encourage her to support House Bill to, when it comes into the senate would be a, for what it's worth, it would be very, very good for us to do, whether it's in an email account, or whether it's a, it's a letter, or however we do it.
Thank you. Superintents report?
Yes. I have a couple of walk-on items. The first, administration recommends that Jeff Utzi and Brian Matheny be approved as volunteer middle school softball coaches. We would entertain a motion to that effect, please.
Motion by Mr. Polakowski, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beistel. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Motion passes eight with one absent.
Uh, the next item I have is also a walk-on item. Southmoreland Middle School mathematics teacher Katie Price has requested a maternity leave beginning on or about April twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen, and ending on January second, two thousand fifteen. The first twelve weeks of her requested leave will fall under the Family and Medical Leave Act. The remainder of her leave would be unpaid parental leave, as provided for in the collective bargaining agreement. So, we would entertain a motion to approve Mrs. Price's leave as well.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Colero, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Polakowski. Questions? Roll call.
Mr. Colero?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Polakowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mrs. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Alt?
Yes.
Mr. Beistel?
Yes.
Mr. Vance?
Yes. Motion passes eight with one absent.
Um, as most of you know, because Peggy made some telephone calls, the Pennsylvania State Police conducted a canine drug sweep of Southmoreland High School and Southmoreland Middle School back on February fourth. This drug sweep was conducted at the request of Southmoreland Administration. Two dogs visit, visited each of the schools. The dogs and their handlers conducted a search of hall lockers and gymnasium locker rooms in accordance with District Policies two-twenty-six and two-twenty-seven, and the protocol followed by the K-9 officers. We have an ongoing relationship with the Pennsylvania State Police, and we will continue to conduct random drug sweeps of each of those schools. And on the topic of drugs, Congressman Tim Murphy is hosting a congressional forum on the growing drug problem in our area, specifically, prescription drugs and heroin, and that's on February nineteenth at St. Vincent College. I will be attending that, and I will possibly be taking one or two other administrators with me. The next item I have, Mr.-
Before you begin, one, can you, now, you can't give names, but can you just give a general what, what the findings were? Because a lot of people think the dogs come in, nothing's found, and we have a drug problem, and nothing's ever found.
That would be accurate. There, there were no drugs found in any lockers during the sweep.
Okay.
Which is not to say we don't have a drug problem.
I'm hearing by many parents and students and board members that we have a major drug problem, so that's why I wanted to ask.
I, I do believe that we have drug issues in our high school, just as every high school in the Commonwealth and in the nation has. But, what I can share with you is no drugs were found in lockers, which is the areas that the canines are permitted to search.
For the new board members, you want to give, like, what they can, can't search and stuff, those that don't know that are a problem?
They can search inanimate objects. Depending on, on which canine group comes, some are willing to search cars, do sweeps of cars. Most are not. We cannot search students on their person.
Any questions or comments, anyone?
Yeah. You mentioned cars, Jack. We can't find somebody to do that? We can find somebody to do cars?
We, we had a group that came some time ago who did cars. The, the state police do not. The state police do not, and I do not know if that previous group does cars or not anymore. That's a gray area in the law right now. From what, Dr. Scott, I think you were there when they explained this, so you can jump in and help me out if I'm not getting this quite correct. But recent court rulings have indicated that random sweeps of cars in parking lots could be a violation of Fourth Amendment search and seizure rights. Is that what I understood the officer to tell us?
Well, it is, yes, somewhat of a gray area, and even beyond that, it's become a major liability issue for the organization that is conducting it, because dogs get very enthusiastic when they hit on drugs, and there has been some liability involving damage to vehicles. So that combined with, again, makes some gray area about Fourth Amendment issues. Typically, what we find, you know, 15 years ago, it was much easier to get searches out, random searches, out in parking lots, and now it's becoming much more difficult.
Right.
Nobody wants to take that on.
Anything else for anyone? Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Colero called me, I believe it was yesterday morning, and indicated that he was invited to attend a book signing at the local library as a representative of the district, and he said, "Would that be okay with you?" And I said, "Absolutely." So Mr. Colero did represent, I said, a book signing. The author is Dr. Richard Secconi, and the book is entitled God and Our Government. And Dr. Secconi actually autographed the copy of the book, and we will be donating this to, I'm suspecting, our high school library.
He's a state representative from the 39th District.
Thank you. A member of the Board of Education visited my office recently and expressed concern because that individual had heard that the results of the most recent SAT testing indicated a decline in our scores. That was not the case. I presented that information on January 9th, and I have a table for you here that details what our scores were, and I'll pass that around here, Peggy, if you don't mind. But basically, from 2012 to 2013, our reading score increased by 31 points, our math score increased by seven points, and our writing score increased by 21 points. I've talked to you at length about the improvement plan that's been put into place at the high school and about the work that the administrators and teachers are doing there to raise the level of achievement, and I think this is only the beginning of some good things we'll be seeing at our high school in the future. So I wanted to share that with you. For the last two or three years, our music department has put on something called the Spring Sing. If you've not been to one of those events, it's a pretty neat event. Students of all ages, elementary through high school, all perform in the same auditorium on the same evening, and at some point during the evening, they all perform en masse. That is scheduled for February 26th. So if you're able to come to the high school auditorium on that evening, I'm sure that you'll have a most enjoyable evening.
What time is that?
I believe 7:00, Mrs. Shipley. We will, I'll double-check that, and we'll get information out to you on that. Last week, we had a parent speak from the podium. She was the parent of two of the students who were involved in the bus mishap that occurred on the way to school. And one of the things that she was concerned about was the fact that her children were removed from the accident scene without having been seen by either a paramedic or a school nurse. She was concerned about the amount of time that elapsed between the time the accident happened and the time that she was notified. So I did a little bit of investigation and review, and we've always had a protocol in place that we follow for transportation emergencies, and we all know what that is. But apparently, since our move from the administration building, we're a little bit more fragmented, it was more difficult to coordinate that effort, and there were some people out in the field that perhaps didn't know the protocol. So I took it upon myself last Friday to put that protocol in writing that was distributed to all administrators, all secretaries, the transportation company, all of our drivers, bus drivers, nurses, and anyone who might be involved in being a school responder to a transportation emergency. And I included a copy of that in your packet as well. So that's just an informational item for you. Yes, Mr. Benz?
Number four. I had a concern about that. The school nurse services the building. Where those students are being transported to or from will immediately report to the scene? We already cut a nurse from last year, so I see that kind of as a problem, that we're shipping a nurse there, we're going to have EMS paramedics, I assume, at that scene. So couldn't we leave the nurse at the building so they can service the building, and once the students get there, if they do need to be seen, they could be seen?
Well, we didn't cut a nurse, we cut a nursing assistant.
Well, it's basically...
And I would prefer to have a certificated member of our staff who is authorized to act in loco parentis, to be able to make recommendations to the administrator on staff, and then the remaining nurse would be on-call for emergencies at the building level.
Is everyone okay with that, or anyone have comment? Thank you.
I would rather have more than one staff who makes decisions.
Thank you.
Mr. Swink has a program that he's never used before, a computer program, and he's able to very quickly and accurately tally gate receipts. And he presented me with a report. I thought that might be interesting to you as well, so I handed that report out for you this evening. Athletic gate receipts to date this year, $24,172. Charlie indicated to me that that amount is significantly less than it has been in previous years as a result of the fact that we don't have a home field. Hopefully, we'll be able to recoup some of those losses, you know, from our insurance company. But it's very nice to be able to have that, you know, tallied and that report at our fingertips, so I wanted to give you a copy of that. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Sussit?
I won't be talking to you tonight, but I would be expecting to be talking to you next month about two remaining, or some of our remaining tax assessment appeals that are starting to move ever so slowly towards a conclusion. So that's all my comments on that.
Thank you. Any board members question or comment? Any citizens comment? Motion to adjourn? Motion by Mrs. Rhodes, second. Second by Mrs. Shipley. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes eight with one absent. Drive safely, folks. Thanks for coming out on a pretty rough night. We appreciate it.